Hi, my name is Darian Burden. I'm with the Raton High School FFA Chapter and I'm also the president.
My name is Ally Bird who is the Raton FFA Chapter as a member.
On behalf of the FFA members, I would like to let you guys know about the expansion of our ag ranch. Last year, the FFA Chapter was awarded a grant by YCC that allowed the FFA members to rebuild the ranch. Robert Sinoc has offered to lease the land west of the high school and south of Gardner Road. This land will be used for grazing livestock. A total of 105 acres, adding to the additional 20 acres FFA already owns. And we are here today due to a fencing issue.
We would like to rebuild the fence on the south side of Gardner Road, approximately 1,000 feet. The materials needed are 100 steel posts, 5,000 feet of barbed wire. We are asking to partner with the city of Raton to repair this fence. The FFA Chapter will provide the labor if the city will provide the materials. In the event you look favorably on our proposal, I would like to present you with this RBS quote for materials needed.
Do you have any questions?
Mayor and Commissioner, if you could, we've put a photo of the fence in question on the board behind you. Sorry for the craning of necks. This is the fence along Gardner Road from basically the high school going west towards the Vermeil Park Gate. So that 1,000 feet in there, you can see that the fence is in pretty poor condition. Has that been kept up? I would view this as kind of a joint responsibility between the property owner and the city of Raton. I think it would be appropriate for us to put funds into the fence, being that we are fencing out that right away. That's what it looks like today.
Is that Mr. Berry, is that any city limits?
It is, Commissioner, yes.
Would you like the proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, why don't you just tell us?
The quote we have is for $900. It will cost approximate, I mean, it will cost 500, what is this number?
That's $500.
$500 for the steel posts and the barbed wire will cost $312.
Total cost, no, and approximately?
Yeah, approximately. We, of course, would have to get a couple of written votes on that, which we'll do, but we do stand in favor of the project.
Do we make a decision now at tonight's meeting?
I don't know that we could vote on this.
You want to have it on the agenda?
Yeah.
So I would make a recommendation, Mr. Berry, that we place it on the agenda for the next meeting and then we'll take action there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, young people, for stepping up and doing this. I know you've been doing a lot of work around the county for us, too. How do you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Thomas V. Hill. I represent the Colfax County Office of Emergency Management. I'm actually a Miami native, but I work here in Raton across the street on the third floor of the county courthouse. I won't tell you which office, that way you won't throw rocks at my window, but know that I'm nearby. Basically, the Colfax County Office of Emergency Management was formed out of the review of the track fire. The county officials took a look and realized they didn't have one person in a position that was able to oversee, not say oversee, but able to advise in all stages of dealing with the track fire, from the initial advance on to the carrying forward of the emergency into the cleanup phase, and then finally the dealing with state and federal authorities. In order to overcome that issue, they created my office. I was hired for the job, actually came out of the assessor's office, and I handle a few other things for the county. On top of emergency management, I handle floodplain management for the county, the E-911 and drill addressing systems, and anything else they decide to throw my way. Basic jobs of the Office of Emergency Management is to help prepare the county and its municipal partners for emergency situations. And then, once those emergency situations happen, it's to help the county and the municipal partners with dealing with those situations and eventually the cleanup. We're all aware of the potential emergencies that face Colfax County. Anything from wildfires, actually earthquakes are a known occurrence here. In fact, our last one was about a 4.0 happening up in Colorado and caused some damage to the county court building. So those types of things can happen. On top of that, hazmat, tornado, you name it, there's all sorts of situations that can evolve into potentially large and life-threatening incidents. What I can do is give you basically a very, very brief explanation of how to handle an expanding incident. However, in the future, my goal is to actually start training our local partners in how to deal with expanding emergencies. A basic training scenario would be in the area of three to four hours. We could handle it, you know, within one day. And I can tailor any sort of training situations for whether there's city staff, volunteer staff, large groups, small groups, you name it. I'm available. The county pays me for this. I ask nothing of you guys, other than your time and your patience with me. Basically, in an expanding incident, I can give you a really good story in the Cimarron flood. Last September, most of you are probably aware, Cimarron experienced about a 10-inch rainfall within a three-hour period. Happened at about 9:00 PM on Sunday. They got the initial call-out, we have water coming into the north end of town. They sent some units over to investigate. Within 10 minutes, realized we have a major problem. Within another five minutes, Nick Cardenas was named incident commander for the incident, and he was on the phone with me. His number-one question was, "What can you do to help me?" His number-two question was, "Do you have any sandbags?" That activated me. I informed the State Emergency Operations Center, which runs 24/7, that there was something going on and to get them prepared for helping us eventually. And through the course of the night, I was able to act as a key component in coordinating with the city of Cimarron, county resources, and state resources. And eventually, through the latter days and weeks to follow, I've been helping the village of Cimarron to deal with the cleanup efforts and eventually to try and seek some funding out of this. And that's kind of the big question. When we're talking about an expanding incident, my number-one goal is maintaining life. Everything else is not even secondary, it's not even third, it's way down there. Preserving life is our number-one. That should always be the number-one in the back of our heads. However, those very, very, very distant secondary ideas are preserving property and how do we pay for it? Because those are questions that we have to deal with in the reality of the situation. And of course, a small-time incident, let's say the highway closes, we have to shelter some people overnight, that can usually be handled within the city, especially for a city with the resources like Raton. You guys could do pretty good. But if there's a lot of heavy traffic going on, if it happens on a vacation weekend, something like that, you could quickly become overwhelmed, and that's when county and state resources would need to be called in. And in those sorts of incidents, I'm basically going to act as the key intermediary between you guys and the county and the state. If you do have an incident that starts up, even before you decide it grows out of your bounds, it's always a good idea to give me a call. I have a cellphone on me that's a 24/7 cellphone. The county pays for me to have that cellphone on me, they pay for my time, and so I'm going to answer it. To give you a good example, over the Christmas holiday, I was actually up in Oregon visiting relatives, and I got a call from the town of Springer. And I answered the phone and I helped them from Springer. That's the beauty of communications and the technology we have. So the county pays for me, so it's a good idea to really use me as a resource. Now, even if you're handling it on your own, give me a call. What that'll allow me to do is first, try and get to a place where I can help you if you guys eventually need my help, or start passing the buck along to someone else if I'm up in the state of Oregon. I can also start informing the State Emergency Operations Center that you guys have a situation going on. What all this does is, if it eventually grows to the point where you need outside help, you're no longer calling and telling me what the situation is. Now you're just calling and saying, "All right, it's time, we could use your help." That saves a whole lot of time, that saves a whole lot of paperwork and a whole lot of headache down the road. If the state is already informed you guys have an issue, then they are going to ask me 100 million questions when I start calling and asking for resources. So that's the basic guidelines of how we start laying this out. The incident starts, call me, I'll inform the EOC, we begin gathering information, and then we need to look at declaring an emergency. And a declaration of emergency isn't something that we should take lightly, but again, if we're looking for, eventually paying for whatever's happening, that's going to be the first step. It also opens the doors during the state of emergency, when we start asking for materials, when we start asking for resources. When I talk with the state EOC, if I tell them first off, "The city of Raton has declared a state of emergency," all sorts of questions drop. It no longer becomes what, why, and how, it becomes what can we do for you? And so declaring that emergency is going to be the first step. And again, depending on what sort of situation we have, we can call in the county commissioners to either declare a similar state of emergency on the county-wide level, or at least make a declaration supporting the city's declaration. That way eventually, I don't know if you're aware, but in order to get FEMA funds, a declaration has to be made. It has to be made on the city level, it has to be made on the county level, and eventually it has to be made by the governor. Only then will federal funds really be unlocked to help us out in any sort of situation. So again, declaring an emergency is something not to be taken lightly, but it's, and again, I'm not familiar with the city's charter, whether the mayor has those powers on her own, or whether an emergency session would need to be called in order to declare that emergency. That would again depend on your charter. But again, when we're talking about paying for emergency situations, tracking what happened is going to be the key thing that we need to do. That not only provides for protecting ourselves from any sort of liabilities that may come, it also helps us to basically process all the paperwork for eventually getting funded. As soon as possible within the emergency, we need to start tracking everything. And the secondary portion of that is, when you apply for federal funding, they're going to ask for matching funds. Now again, depending on the emergency, depending upon the amount of money that's involved, that percentage can change. It can be 5%, it can be 10%, it can be 20% matching funds. However, if we've tracked all of our resources throughout the entire time of an emergency, from the initial startup through the cleanup process, all the paperwork, everything involved, we can use each one of those paid staff time, volunteer staff time, and any resources we've expended towards that emergency to go towards our matching funds. So if we do our paperwork right, there's a possibility we pay nothing out of pocket for our matching funds. We can usually make up those sorts of things with the amount of personnel and manpower we put into it. On top of that, if we bring in some outside groups to help clean up, for example, with the village of Cimarron, we brought in the New Mexico Southern Baptist Associations. They run a basically disaster relief program, and they have various trailers that are able to feed upwards of 1,000 people at a time, trailers that specialize in cleanup of hazardous waste, trailers that specialize in the cleanup of regular waste. And one of the beautiful things they do is they volunteer all of their time and all of their equipment towards whoever they're helping's matching funds. So they ask nothing, other than they feel they have a service they need to provide, they provide that service, and anything that they expend towards that goes towards the matching funds. So there's all sorts of resources we can call in in order to help ourselves out and eventually get through any problems we might have. So again, documentation is going to be key in any sort of these incidences, and that's something I can help on. Not only in the actual emergency, but even beforehand, I can provide additional training to any sort of staff on what kind of documentation we need to take and what sort of actions we need to be looking at throughout the state of the emergency. Some of the resources I can offer you guys right off the bat is, number one, I do own a shelter trailer. It's a county-managed resource, although we look at it as a regional resource. It's the ability to set up 250 cots anywhere that we can haul that trailer to. Normally, that's run through the Red Cross, although the current state of the Red Cross is kind of sketchy right now. We're again working on that. We do not want Red Cross to leave Colfax County, we do not want Red Cross to leave Raton. I don't think they're going to. But we have a little bit of work to do on that. Additionally, if the city wants to look at partnering with the county, we can set up a city volunteer network to also manage that shelter trailer. So that way, if we do not want to rely on the Red Cross, we can use a city team, and that can be either paid staff or volunteers. So again, there's numerous possibilities in the usage of that shelter trailer, and again, anywhere we can set up those beds, it's available for us. On top of that, the county also has paid for a reverse notification system. It's a reverse 911 system, basically. The idea is, in the event of an emergency situation, we can call out, we can hit people's landlines, we can hit cellphones, we can send text messages, we can send emails, we can do Twitter updates, and all the other social media things possible to get the word out in the state of an emergency. The county realized this system was important enough to pay for it, and they're offering it for free to all our municipal partners. Again, all we ask of you is provide me a list of names of authorized users, and there'll be a short training session involving that, probably an hour or two hours tops, and we can set up that system. The other bonus of the system is it not only allows us to contact the county as a whole, we can select certain groups within our city, within the county, any sort of way we can geographically slice and dice our county, we can do that. So for example, if we know we have an outage of water on Fifth Street within a certain couple blocks, we can go inside the system, we can circle Fifth Street in those certain couple blocks, and we can send out a message, it's only going to go to those residents. So again, it's a powerful system, it can be easily expanded or contracted, depending on their needs. The final bonus of the system is it allows us to set up subgroups for sending out messages. One example I'll give you is Raton, now Fire District, the new Fire District that was set up by Larry Osborne. He uses it pretty much on a daily basis to keep his volunteers aware of what's going on, so he can inform them of meetings, of meeting cancellations, he can inform them of call-outs in addition to their paging system, send them a notice, show up to the station, we have a fire. So it's again a powerful system. We could set up any sort of subgroups you can possibly imagine, whether they be city employees, city volunteers, anything along those lines, so that way you can keep your personnel informed of what's going on and what's happening. And again, that system, we can also use for basically non-emergency messages, so day-to-day business sort of activities, again, meeting notices, training notices, that sort of things, or city cancellations. We can send out those messages pretty much at will. The only thing that I do ask is no political messages, obviously, and no selling of anything. Other than that, the system is free to use. Again, all I ask is you show up to a training. And again, the system is monitored, although I don't do any censoring, all messages are monitored, obviously for liability reasons on the county level. And again, pretty much the main thing I can offer to the city and to anyone else in the county is my brain. The county pays me to be an expert on these matters. In the past two and a half years that I've been in this position, I have made countless contacts with state and federal resources. I've spent a lot of time out of town, going to various conferences and meetings and trainings. Unfortunately, I haven't spent a whole lot of time going around locally and letting people know who I am. So that's what I'm seeking to resolve by showing up here tonight and by continuing on with this. Like I said, the county pays me to be an expert on these matters. They ask nothing out of you, other than to use me if you feel the need to use me. So thank you very much. I do need to leave, but I have some business cards I'd like to leave. And again, if you have any questions, any concerns, any ideas, I look forward to hearing from you.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would just add that where the city and the county, you know, need to really have a good cooperative working relationship, I mean, we really did see that on the track fire, you know, a big event, but as far as taking care of people that are in town, typically see that with a big snow event, and we really need to plan for that, to combine our resources. We're probably out of the window on that now, but through the winter, we had talked a lot internally about that, being that the Red Cross situation is sketchy, and so we had a lot of planning here internally on that in case of that event, but that's where we need to pool our resources. I think the other thing is, we, for example, have, are required to have an emergency action plan for Lake Maloya Dam. There's any dam in that classification is required by state statute. And as a part of that, there's a requirement that we do have those affected people ready to go in a reverse call-out situation for evacuation if we had to, and then we have a functional training exercise periodically. So we're due for an update of that emergency action plan, we really need to review the status of that functional exercise, and we really need to look with Mr. V.
15-09, February 2015 financial report.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, you have the February financial report. If you will turn to the general fund summary, we can go over that real briefly. You'll see that as of February 28th, that our ending cash balance was just under $1 million. We're at 981,224. And then I've noted less the required 1/12 reserve in our designated street improvement, that your available cash would be 408,840, which is a considerable improvement based on our cash flow throughout the year. And we did receive another property tax check in February. So the second page is actually the cash flow report, so you can see, probably since October is one of our low months, October, November, December, and then in January and February, when we received the property tax, is when our cash flow situation improves. For the month of March, we did receive the grocery receipts tax check. Year-to-date, compared to last year, it's up about 3.7%, but we have to take into consideration that this is the first check that does reflect January sales and also reflects the new quarter percent GRT. Now that new quarter percent is not reflected in the general fund that we track for budget purposes, because it's included in a separate fund. So because we did budget a 3% increase, we are showing a negative 3.01% decrease, which is about $62,802 per what we've budgeted. So I did make a note that March grocery receipts is typically one of our lower distributions that we do receive throughout the year, and at this point, I think that the amount of the small cities assistance that we receive will definitely be the determining factor on where we're at going into this next budget cycle and whether or not we need to delay certain purchases till the next fiscal year. So I know the session just ended on Saturday, and generally, we'll receive that check probably in a couple weeks. So hopefully, when I give this report next month, we'll have a better indication of the amount received for the small cities assistance. Also in your packet is the grocery receipts tax comparison report, which pretty much summarizes the same information that I just gave you. And then on our financial statement report, you have a copy of our ending cash balances for all funds, for our bank reconciliation. And then the second page of that report would give you where we're at year-to-date as far as general fund revenues and general fund expenditures for each department. So 8/12ths of the fiscal year would be 67%, and our expenditures overall in the general fund were running right about 64%. That's all I have for you this evening for the financial report. Is there any questions on anything that I've provided?
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could, on the new quarter cent increment, there were specifications on how that money could be expended, and I think that we would plan to have a conversation with the New Mexico Finance Authority about the potential for accelerated debt service payment, bring that to the commission, and then ask for your direction on that. So we are operating with the knowledge that there are specific requirements for that increment.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report, 2015-09, February 2015.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2015-09, February 2015 financial report.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor from Chavis County?
Yes.
Yes. Dilerate and act on the first amended tolling and extension agreement between the city of Raton and the Hartford Steam Boiler Inspection and Insurance Company.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could, this has to do with insurance that covered the Portzilla generating unit. As you remember, we had a major failure of that engine, and the city of Raton and Raton Public Service Company have been negotiating with Hartford Steam Boiler for a settlement of an insurance claim on that issue. We do have the president of the Board of Directors of Raton Public Service Company, Kathy McQuarrie is on hand, and she will give us some more information on the agreement that you have in front of you that has been considered by RPS, and their recommendation to approve the agreement has been completed at their meeting. So Kathy, if I could have you give us some specifics, please.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor and Commissioner, this is an amendment, the first amended tolling agreement. Back in October of last year, 2014, we brought the original tolling agreement to you in regards to Hartford Steam Boiler. What this is doing is, as Mr. Berry just indicated, obviously in October 2012, Portzilla had a failure, that's a nice way of putting it, and at that time, we had insurance through Hartford Steam Boiler. They allowed us through the time of April 2014 to be able to finish settlement and also start replacement and/or just accept a cash value. We entered into discussions with them, and as Mr. Berry just indicated, we are still in litigation and trying to come up with a settlement that always agreed to, so that at this point has not been resolved. However, this new amended agreement allows us to continue those discussions and forward the settlement process through, if need be, November 1st, 2016. So it would be coming up for our ending in April of this year if we did not extend it. Hartford Steam Boiler has already signed off on this and is willing to do the November 1st, 2016 extension. We're hoping we're not having to wait that long to finalize it, but it does give us time if necessary. RPS Board will have this on our agenda tomorrow evening. We have discussed it, it just needs to be formalized, and as you know, RPS and the city of Raton are both on this agreement, so therefore, we're requesting that you approve it and have signature available to us, and then we will have that before our board tomorrow evening and more than likely approve that, and then it'll be sent off to the attorneys to handle it. that, and then it'll be sent off to the attorneys to handle as they need to be.
Do you want to have any questions? So Mrs. McQuarrie?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the first amended tolling and extension agreement between the City of Raton and Hartford Steam Boiler Inspection and Insurance Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first amended tolling and extension agreement between the City of Raton and Hartford Steam Boiler. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The City of Raton has had a contractor at the convention center. We have had the gym area closed to refinish the floor. The contractor is done. We will keep the gym closed for about 10 days to allow that polyurethane surface to cure. So that's closed right now, but the floor looks like brand new, looks great, and Rico and Leonard at the Building Department have been working to get that done, working with the contractor, and giving them what assistance they need, so thanks to those guys. Just to... we did talk about the spring break hours at the Aquatic Center. I did want to point out that from April 6th to 10th, the hours will be 1:30 to 5:30 p.m. during that spring break time. The Educational Task Force will meet at 8:15 tomorrow morning at MCMC Long Term. We do have a survey completed on the Highlands Building. John Davidson has been in contact with the Highlands Board. We do anticipate completion of a deed that would come here for your final approval, so we're making progress on that. And we do look forward to getting some operations in that facility before very long. There are a lot of ideas on how to approach that, and this task force has been very active on establishing a direction. There will be an ICIP workshop on April 8th. We have... excuse me, not on April 8th, in Santa Fe on April 30th, or May 28th, or in Taos on May 26th. So that is the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. We would also like to schedule our public hearings here at the commission meeting that would give citizens and the commission a chance to make their priorities known on our infrastructure capital improvement plan. So those dates are coming up, and we'll inform you, we would plan on having staff present at one of those meetings, and we'll look at the calendar. The Northeast New Mexico Economic Development Organization will have their third annual meeting tomorrow here in Raton at KBOBS, that will be 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. I did get a report from the New Mexico Department of Transportation. They had bid a project to construct a game fence throughout Raton on Interstate 25. They reported that the bids came in much higher than their estimate or their budget, so they do intend to reject those, that, I guess they got a single bid, reject that bid and rebid the project. So that will be delayed for some time. I would anticipate completing the design work and going out for bids for the second phase of improvements at the Old Pass Gallery, the Wells Fargo Building. You remember, last year, we did use lodgers' tax money, not promotional money, to fix the roof. We had a roof leaking issue. What we plan to do between now and the end of the fiscal year would involve improvements to the windows, especially the wood framing, repainting of that, repainting of the stucco walls, some repairs on stucco walls. And we have a particular problem with rainwater coming off the roof and seeping down into crawl space, so we would take some measures there on the ground to keep that from happening. So we'll be working on that, and we anticipate bringing the bids to the commission at one of the, probably the second April meeting. We do have a number of board appointments that we are going to advertise on the radio and in the paper. We did hear about two planning and zoning positions that would be appointed or reappointed, and the Housing Authority does have a position, and we have other positions. We will put that together and put that out for the public, and ask people to apply for these board positions, and then bring them to the commission for your action, your appointment. I did have a meeting yesterday. There are three trustees that have the responsibility for Darden Estate Funds that were earmarked for library uses. And we did have a discussion, there was an idea from those trustees in regard to maybe using those funds combined with possibly some other funds to, for the idea of a library annex. And we are looking at a couple of buildings that may function for a library annex. I think the idea would be to display materials that we don't have room to display in the library, they're stored in the basement, probably provide a community meeting room, and maybe some additional computer space. So there was some discussion going on on that. We'll continue to work on that and ultimately bring that to the commission for your consideration. So we're working on that. I did have a couple of photos for you here on what the Public Works Crew has been working on. We had reported that we were working on drainage channels. This is a drainage channel that is, that crosses Molton Avenue and drains the north end of town. So you can see that the channel is made out of sandstone rubble, probably built in the 1930s, and the problem there is sediment. So we have two feet of sediment in this channel. This is prior to our work. Okay, Jason? And that's what the channel looked like after we did remove the sediment. So we have more of this work to go on in town, but we... this is a solution right there, you see the crew that we have. So those four gentlemen are the crew. That's what we have to work with, they cover a lot of territory. When we talk about the street patching that needs to be done, and the various things that have to be done through the town, these are really the gentlemen that we rely on, not a big crew. This was a large project, and you see the equipment solution that we have here, but there's... don't get me wrong, there's a lot of hard work and manual labor that went in this particular project. Next one, Jason? So there you see, they did rent a small excavator, and now we're getting the sediment out. Next one, Jason? So this is Molton Avenue in the background, and the problem typically is a drainage structure crossing the street. That's where we tend to collect a lot of sediment. This is a picture when we were getting started, and then the next picture is when we got completed. And so that's a little dark, but you can see that that's a four-foot diameter drainage pipe, and it's essentially, it's got a lot of sediment in it. So the next phase would be on these culvers, trying to remove that. And that's probably a specialty contractor, which will identify it and bring to you. And then you can see that there was about two foot of sediment that was removed there. Next one, Jason? This is Pecos and South Fifth Street. So we have another structure there. This really drains, this is an interceptor ditch throughout the west side of town, the original town site, some other subdivisions. Again, a lot of sediments there to deal with, a lot of manual labor at this site. Next one, Jason? That's looking downstream, so a lot of sediment was removed from this stretch of the channel. Next one, Jason? The problem is the drainage structure crossing the street, that's the intersection of Pecos and South Fifth, and so we still have to come out and do additional work on cleaning those pipes. So that's something the crew's been working on, very time-consuming, a lot of work there. Additionally, add, we've, you know, been trying to keep up with street patching, and I think the crew's done a, you know, they've made their best efforts to get out there. We have a lot of potholes in town. We're really trying to hit that, that is a priority. In addition, it's the windy time of year in solid waste, and a lot of times we just have to go up and pick up litter, and that's going to be fairly frequent, so we've been working on that as well. So not a lot of manpower, but a lot of work to do, and so we're doing it as quickly as we can. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to have you pass on to the crews. We've been observing them, working in the waterways, and Jason, and you guys too. Kudos to those crews, because they have been working hard, and I've observed them. So give them our thanks and our appreciation.
I will, Commissioner, and I appreciate that. We have asked a lot from them, and they do work very hard.